Joining us today for the Board of Trustees meeting on March 25th. If we could start with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first we'll start with public comment. Come on up to the podium.
My name is Markin Tokley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive regarding the Township Budget based on the budgeting for physical sustainability presentation by the Michigan State University and Michigan Department of Treasury and the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, Act Two of 1968 is amended through Act 493 of 2000. I'd like to understand where the, in the board packet, were the accumulated budget surpluses and deficits and why are they not being provided in the board packets? Where's the transparency? Six of you who ran last year ran on improved transparency. And it's a requirement in the act for, at the beginning and the end. Where are the revenues for the central services fee and the expenses that went out against it? How much was retained and how much was taken that should have been paid for property taxes instead of water and sewer fees? What about the capital investment account? Where are those revenues, expenses, and interest income? You had over nine million, close to $10 million in the audit last year. Should have garnered several hundred thousand in expenses or interest income on that account alone. Regarding water and sewer, six inch water meter uses a lot more water in a per gallon, per minute basis. You're charging currently about 63 per gallon, per minute. Four inch goes up to 72 per gallon, per minute, or nine cents more than a six inch meter. A three inch meter is 79 per gallon, per minute, 16 cents more than the six inch meter. A two inch water meter is charged 88 cents per minute on a per gallon basis or 25 cents more. And it keeps going up. 1.5 is 90 cents. A one inch is 95. A three quarter inch is what? A buck oh two. And five eighths is a buck 53. So that doesn't seem very reasonable to me that smaller meters should get charged more on a per gallon, per minute basis if it's, according to you, potential consumption. Also, fire hydrants have the potential to consume. What are they being charged? And should only water and sewer customers pay for that or is that a property tax requirement? The same can be said for the water, for the sewage rates. Lastly, on property tax increases, you don't have to take the full amount. Social Security went up 3.2% this year. I don't see why we're asking senior citizens to pay more than 3.2% more, especially when that came from the federal government. Thank you.
Mary Alzaduk, I'm a Bloomfield Township President. We are approaching year three in an unfair water rate system. Two years ago, the Bloomfield Township Board voted to charge some residents more and some customers less in a warped attempt to respond to the Waterloo lawsuit that was filed by catfishing attorneys. The township claims that they are using guidelines provided by the American Waterworks Association. I contacted the American Waterworks Association and asked the questions about their recommendation on rates and their response is in direct conflict to the claim by Bloomfield Township. While the AWA Raftellis, this is a quote, "Water and wastewater rate surveys displays results based on pipe size. This is done to group similar information together and does not indicate the basis upon which rates are set." So why are you using pipe size as a way to base rates? As a result of the unfair fixed rate premium for water and sewer to residents with a 1.5 inch pipe, I have paid an additional $700 over homes with a one inch pipe. And my cost premium compared to homes with a three quarter inch pipe is even more egregious with an additional $1,000 over two years. Is this fair? Hell, no, it's not fair. Water usage is dependent on the number of people in a household and the frequency of washing and lawn watering. It is not dependent on pipe size. This is a fabricated rationale that is not fair and is profoundly wrong. A family of six uses a lot more water than a family of two regardless of their pipe size. Should residents be charged for what they use? Yes. Should premiums for residents be placed on pipe size for residents? No. Then why can't we fix this now? According to NOAA, Bloomfield Township does not have the data. Well, if we don't have the data now, we certainly didn't have the data two years ago when you decided to zap people based on pipe size. You took the input of 10 to 12 residents who showed up for a meeting and a small number that returned a survey claiming that people wanted fairness in rates, largely between commercial and residential. These people did not know how you were going to implement a new rate plan. Most would not have said that you should zap higher rates on some residents while lowering the costs for others. The original rates were fair as they were based on usage, period. Why should I be paying a large premium for a fixed charge when I barely use five to six units of water per quarter? This is outrageous and it is a rate plan that must be fixed to be fair for all resident customers. Please do not approve a rate plan that does not address this profound inequity based on a faulty premise of pipe size.
Good evening. Mike McCready, 4957 Bloomfield Ridge. I've received numerous phone calls from residents voicing their concerns regarding the operations of the Bloomfield Township. One of the more common themes is the building department. Numerous residents have indicated how frustrated they are with the time it takes to get building permits for their project on their homes. Plan reviews depending on the projects are taking weeks to get done. Building inspections are even worse. Residents are indicating it can take upwards of several weeks to get inspections completed. It is only going to get worse as we get into the prime time, spring and summer months as construction activity is only going to increase. This all starts at the top. Our homeowners are told there is not enough personnel for the amount of activity that is going on at the present time. I believe Supervisor Walsh, you're the head of human resources as the supervisor? As head of HR, it is your responsibility to ensure your department heads have the resources to deliver services to the community. The building department is an enterprise fund. That means the revenues collected for the services pay for the operations of the department. The solution is very simple. When building activity is busy, outsource certain activities to private companies. There are numerous municipalities in the area that do that. If construction activity slows down, the department is not saddled with the fixed overhead costs. Additionally, I would like to, I would look to authorize the use of part-time inspectors. There are a number of individuals available with the skillset needed, willing to work on a part-time basis. I would make sure the pay structure is such that we can attract quality people with a service-oriented attitude. I would make sure we have enough employees available to handle inspection five days a week instead of the current four days, four days we have now. It's time to think outside the box. Now is the time to make changes before it's too late. After all, we are here to serve our residents and the community. Let's do it right. Thank you.
All right, I'll close public comment. Next, we'll go on to approving the board minutes of March 11th, 2024. Paul had a chance to look them over. Unless there's any comments, I'd like for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Neil Barnett.
Support.
Motion or support by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have our public hearing. So we'll go ahead and start first with the discussion and then we'll open it up for public comment as well since it is a public hearing after. So first we'll have our truth and taxation discussion presented by Darren Croats, our Township Possessor.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. Couple of my colleagues asked me, what is truth and taxation? It is part of the budget that we have to have. In other words, letting the public know that we are going to actually be collecting more tax revenue in 2024 than we did last year in 2023. So that's part of it. Well, I guess that's really the whole part of it. But it's interesting that this year is the first time that I've ever presented this in front of you guys where we've actually had our post-March Board Review numbers to give to you. So normally I do this during the board review, so it's still kind of an estimate. But now we have the, the final taxable value as of post-March Board Review, which is on both of the handouts that I provided for you. I'm not sure what order they, they are in, in your packet, but one of them, the first one, looks like this, is just our township millage rates. And then the second one actually that has revised 320 of 24 on there includes the, the library millage. Just a couple of points to note on both of these. Where the library millage was, the library debt millage, that's no longer going to be levied for next year. So that's why that's zero in case anyone was wondering on that. And then with the new senior services millage of the 3.28 that's on there. So the second one is inclusive of all of them, library and township property. The first is just, just township millages.
First, before we do the discussion, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment for this public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this matter?
My name is Markin Tokley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. Again, I will, I find it very concerning that we're raising property taxes based on property values, which is significantly higher than what is being paid out by the federal government for social security increases. We're now required to take the full amount. This year, the township has been fortunate with the interest income being collected and the additional contributions that have been made to the pension fund along with the capital improvement funds. There's more than enough cash to go around. We also are in an, we also have an opportunity to give back some of that money instead of putting all 3.5 million towards capital improvement fund. A portion of that could go back to pay for the tax fees next year in February for the township. The township could retain the funds and collect interest and come through that time. I think when we look at what we're going to assess and how much we're going to collect, that's an important part because we can give some of that money back, especially if we have those additional funds available. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Yeah, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Is there any questions from the board for Director Croats? Not a, for a motion?
My, uh, just comment.
Yeah.
Not a question. Excuse me. So Darren, this increase in tax levy is driven by the taxable value going up.
Correct.
Right. Because on the second page, sorry, I have a cough drop in my mouth. Our overall millage rate is actually declining from 12.5448 to 12.2714. So it's a decrease of 0.27 mills year-over-year in terms of our tax rate.
Right.
But the reason is that we're seeing this increase in tax collection is because of the increase in taxable value. And I just wanted to add a comment, as you and I have discussed many times, this is not a new paradigm. This is an aberration in history. We are not going to see 5% increases going forward in time. In fact, over the next few years, I think we're going to start to get back to the 1% and 2% increases that we had seen in the past, that this increase is driven solely by the fact the CPI index went up by more than 5%.
Correct, yeah.
Under role A, we're capped at 5%.
Yes. Yeah, so I mean, this is something that's completely new. I don't know that Jason and I and our entire crews have ever seen anything like that. In fact, I don't know that this has ever happened before.
Right.
Where you've got no rollbacks and then taxable values increasing like they are. I fully anticipated to go back to what is more typical, which is 3, 3.5% consumer price indexes.
Right. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yes.
Any other for motion?
Double.
Motion by Trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Next, we will have another public hearing after the presentation of considering approval of the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget by Director Jason Tuss.
Good evening. So we spent significant amount of time at the study session going through the details. So I'm going to use this time instead to kind of bring back up the digital budget book and make sure everyone's aware of what, what information is out there. So this is, there was a link in the packet that took you here. It can also be found through the finance page right on the township website. There's a welcome letter. There's dropdown menus here. One thing I wanted to point out is this, this was updated recently, the fund structure. So list all the budgeted funds and the types. So most of our funds are special revenue funds and then we have a few debt service funds. Budget overview. There's this executive overview, which is helpful. Gives you the 30,000-foot view of the budget overall, not at a fund level, but you know, how much is taxable value going up? Are there any major purchases, capital outlay? What types of increases to wages in the contracts? Things like that. Under fund summaries, you can get a higher detail, higher view of some of the funds. For example, click on road fund gives you a quick summary of what the fund, why it exists, what is its purpose. It's a little bit interactive as you hover over different things on the charts. So for instance, this is funded, over, over half of that fund is funded by property taxes. You can look at last year, current year, and the upcoming year. And again, if you hover over, it'll, it'll give you the actual dollar amounts for each one of those sections. And then some people are just used to looking at the numbers. So here it gives you the comprehensive summary. So beginning fund balance for each of those years adds in the revenues by major category, not each detail line, and then the expenditures, and then gives you the ending fund balances. And then again, fund balance below that. There's some other useful things in here under funding sources that, that you can look at, our property taxes, charges for services, investment earnings. We have a summary of all the inter-fund transfers, all the ins and outs, and then showing that they're balancing between. And then if you want to dive into the line by line, that's where the departments come in. So let's do fire and EMS. Expenditures, year by year, major categories of expenses. So obviously, personnel is the biggest in that for the service they're providing. And then detail of, of each individual account, which you won't find in the fund summaries, but you'll find it in the departments. And then every department ends with organizational chart. You can look at our long-term liabilities, both the DB plan and shows you the funding levels, the liability and the assets for that and as well as OPEB, showing our liability came down and our assets are growing. A debt snapshot, so outside of your long-term liabilities, your actual debt, like bond, you know, selling bonds by type. So the pension obligation bonds are still our, our largest debt outstanding. Campus construction, road SAD, so those are going to keep going up at the same time as being, we're paying them down. We've been issuing new, we've been receiving new petitions for SADs. And the library, this is going to go away in another year. We're on our final year of maturity, May of 24. And then you can get into the details of each one of those below. And then lastly, for those interested or want to take a look at our capital plans, we do a one year, I see one year for the year that's coming up that's in the budget. So we got almost 2.4 million in capital requests for the current year. And then as you go down, you can look at it by department and then within each department, what are the requests? And then there's the multi-year. So this will be the next five years, so four years beyond the upcoming budget. So almost $9 million over the next five years in planned capital. Those future years will keep changing. So next year, we'll look at, did things shift? Can, can, is something going to get delayed or pulled forward a year? And then obviously, the further you go out, the, the more estimated these prices are. So they get updated as we get closer to actually making those purchases. And then the last thing is, is this print. You can have a PDF of this entire document, digital document, sent to your email. And you can select just certain sections or the whole document. Do the whole document, it's going to be like 400 pages. So just a warning. So that's still out there. And then we're probably going to see, next time when I go over this, hopefully we'll see a, a big improvement. They're working on making some updates to how this is presented, making it easier for people to navigate through. So beyond that, nothing really changed from study session, last time it was up here to, to now, which is why I don't really have anything else to, to present on or discuss. So.
We have one change, will end up being a budget amendment. The one, actually, I wish the person would have stayed to listen. Sometimes they bring up things that they, we could have mentioned to them, but we already do have part-time inspectors and we already do shared services with Rochester Hills because Oakland Hills Country Club and the schools are such a taxing effect on the, on the building department right now that we already have had for a couple of years, if not longer, part-time as well as that. But we are contracting with, we've narrowed it down to Carlisle or McKenna and we'll be starting a contract. But we think that because we don't have that full-time staffer that retired, plus that we may not need a budget amendment, but that is something that we may come forward with because we have about $150,000 right now that would be available, but there's a chance it could cost 200 total by the end of Oakland Hills Country Club and, and all of that. So we didn't change it on here on purpose because we think it'll be able to be absorbed. If not, we may be coming to with a budget later in the year with, this is actually what the cost, because it's a use, you only pay for it as you use it. So we're estimating it should be covered, but I think that person would be happy to hear, we already have two of the three things asked for and the third one's being hired. So it's good to know. So you'll be expecting that budget amendment. And I think that was the only other change since the study session. Anybody? Oh, first, before we have the discussion, this is a public hearing. So again, is there anybody out there that would like to speak on this option? We will go ahead and open the public hearing.
I'm Mr. Markin Tokley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. And it's interesting because there are two parts of the budget. You have to amend, you have to accept all the amended budgets since the last meeting that you had here. And you've, the clerk got more money that wasn't in the, the assessment several months ago that was done. You also increased the amount of money going to capital improvement fund. So those are changes to the current year budget that have to be adopted and approved. So that's inconsistent with what was said up here. For next year, I totally agree with what Supervisor Walsh had stated, but for the current year, that does have to be amended and approved and those have to be captured in that, at this time because this is the last meeting for the year. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So I'll hold up the board. Does anyone have any questions for Director or myself?
I have comments, but I want to see if anyone has questions.
First, we'll start with Trustee Kalinsky.
First, I appreciate you going through this. I went through before we had the first round for the budget. I think it's really transparent for people to take a look at and it shows it in different viewpoints. So some people just like seeing the line items, which is what I did. And I went through line by line, but you can show different data points and different ways to look at it. So depending on what kind of user it is, it seems to be very interactive. So I really appreciate it and I hope our residents can use it because it is very transparent. So any day of the week, you can see what our budget is, what our items are, where our debt is, how we're spending our money or how we're spending your money really. So I appreciate you taking the time to go through it with us. Thank you.
I did have one question with regard to the fund balance on there. Is that live? So like, will it show what the fund balance is at the moment that you're looking at it?
All those numbers are static.
Okay.
But that, that the 23, which is the starting far-left column is actual because that's audited last year. The budget is what we had anticipated when we adopted 24. Estimated is adding in all the activity that we think is going to happen, but we still have, you know, a couple of months to go here of invoices and things. And then, then a projection on, of course, to next year.
Thanks.
No, just a comment again. Jason, the whole process from study session through taking questions, from board to tonight, I mean, make this, excuse me, very clear as far as how the budget is set up, where the money's going, where it comes from. And so I appreciate the time you've taken and over the years, how you've made this actually improved the presentation and make it clearer and more transparent. This certainly is helpful and I look forward to looking at the improvements to it that you mentioned. Thank you.
Trustee Kalinsky?
Sorry, I have one more.
No, go ahead. This is time out.
No, and again, I appreciate it because when we got the initial budget, I was emailing with Jason. He was, him and the staff was providing the information, contacting department heads. So even before the study session, we were doing research. And even up to today, I was asking Jason about budget stuff and he was always responsive. So again, when we need information, we can get it quickly, get it factual. He provides me line items, snapshots. It's very easy and transparent for this process. So then I know the numbers we have here are the same numbers we're voting on and it gives me backstory to how we get here. So it's great and I appreciate it and I appreciate all the hard work you and your team do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So a quick question. With regard to any changes in last year's budget, each of those have been represented by a budget amendment that the board adopted already, correct? Correct. Nothing outstanding?
No.
And with regard to this, by the way, we're being asked to approve this budget on an activity level, right?
It's by, only general fund. And that's actually one of the, one of the tabs in here shows our, our budget policy and how we adopt. And it's also in the audit disclosed that way. Every other fund is at a highest level, department level or fund level. The general fund, because the way the, the budget act is written, is on a organization slash activity level. So general fund has all those different activities and departments, elections, clerks, accounting. Each one of those is its own little sub-budget.
Got it. Great, thank you.
Jason, this is the eighth budget that I've had a chance to vote on and it'll be the eighth time that I voted for and I'm very proud to do that this time. I think we took a balanced approach to capital investment, spending on public services, paying down debt and putting aside money for rainy day. So for, I'd like to commend the board and the department heads for that, working together to come up with that result. I also know because you and I worked on it, we have a 10-year cash flow model that goes even further out and including a detailed capital improvement plan. And you referenced that in the, in the board book there. So, so I know a lot of work went into this. We put a lot of work around it as well in terms of the long-range planning. I think what we came up with is a good balance between, as I said, spending on
between, as I said, spending on public services, saving and paying down debt. So I, I'm proud to support it.
Anyone else? If I look for a motion?
Make the motion to adopt that the budget is presented.
Motion by Trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by Trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
So next, we have considering approval for the fireworks display for Forest Lake Country Club scheduled for Saturday, June twenty-second, presented. You are not Peter Vlahos. Presented by Fire Chief John Leroy.
I'm going to take care of all of them tonight. So on March sixth, the Fire and Life Safety Division performed a site inspection at Forest Lake Country Club for their proposed fireway, annual fireworks display that they always do. The Fire and Life Safety Division found no issues with their plan. It's the same as in previous years. Their site met all requirements and they were not, the company was again notified of all requirements that will be needed on that, that given night. The night in question is June twenty-second at approximately ten P M. with a rain date of June twenty-third, tentatively. We've had no issues that we know of in the past regarding anything with safety or their operations for this annual event. And we see no need why this submission should not be approved. Do you have any questions of me for Forest Lake?
Anyone have any questions? I look for a motion.
I have a motion that we approve the fireworks display for June twenty-second for Forest Lake Country Club.
Motion by Trustee Murray?
Support.
Support by Trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have considering approval of the BRICS Fire Station Alerting System purchase, also by Fire Chief John Leroy.
This is for obviously next year's budget, which is Jason just presented. The BRICS Station Alerting System is a two, two-pronged approach to station alerting. Currently, all four fire stations have a station alerting system that was implemented and designed and undertaken by the I T department over the last thirty-five years. It really is a piecemeal of parts and different technologies that were all put together to make work in the fire stations under an old radio system that is even no longer in existence. Technology has changed so much over the years. The I T department kept modifying it, but it's reached a point where it can no longer be maintained with the new radio systems and frequencies that are being used to transmit the radio signals. So what BRICS does is BRICS is a station alerting system that provides a multifaceted approach towards station alerting. You will tell the firefighters by light color in the station, what kind of medical, what kind of incident they're going on, whether it's a fire or a medical. So if they wake up in the middle of the night, they'll know what instantly, what kind of incident that they're going on. It alerts them in a health, safety, health, smart manner for cardiac, so they don't get woken up right away and they're increasing their heart rates. And it really is a generally safer practice and standard. Another thing that BRICS does is it integrates a computer-aided dispatch voice, a text-to-talk concept into the dispatch console. What this will do is it allows our dispatchers to keep doing their emergency medical directives over the phone while typing in information. And they hit send on the call and the, the computer dispatches the initial information with the address to get emergency crews in route faster while they're still uninterrupted on the call. And then, once the crews call and route, then the dispatcher comes over the radio with any pertinent information that may not have been said in the call. This system is being installed, will be installed in all four fire stations. Basically, a totally start-from-the-ground-up approach at a cost of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and four, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, and then an annual ten thousand dollar software fee after that. I would like to request that approval to purchase and install the system.
Any questions? I look for a motion.
Some mood.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalinsky. Support by Trustee Vicky. All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed? That passes.
Okay.
Great. So next, we have considered approval of scheduling and contracting of BioCare to perform firefighter physicals and calcium heart tests under the twenty-twenty-two assistance to fire, firefighters grant, AFG, for the firefighter health and wellness.
Yes, that's a lawful.
Like a core illness one right there.
This is a, this was a three-part grant that we received several months ago. I came before the board and asked for permission to purchase the new workout equipment, which has all been installed and currently already being used. It's been a great upgrade to our previous facilities. And the second part to the grant was a pure fitness model that we're training up six other firefighters to start a pure fitness program, which will go in conjunction of after these physicals to keep firefighters in top physical shape and strengthening any weaknesses that are found as a result of these physicals. These physicals are in conjunction with the NFPA nineteen eighty-two, which is the standard for firefighter physicals. And we currently, other than your initial physical when you hire in the department, we haven't done physicals. So what this grant is allowing us to do is do a full start-over physical, establishing a new baseline, and then hopefully moving forward, maintaining levels so we can understand where we're at. These, these grants are all, this grant also provides for calcium channels or calcium screenings of the heart, which is a pre, preemptive warning sign for potential heart attacks in the future. And also will be done with abdominal ultrasounds as well. So it really is a complete package. We interviewed three providers and requested proposals and quotes from three providers with BioCare coming out on top after an exhaustive look into their history with around the state of Michigan, interviewing and references and other fire departments that have used them. And really, what another key determining factor was then is they do it all in-house. They bring a facility to the fire department. They do all the testing in their, in their facility trailer in the back behind the station and allows for minimal interruption to operations during the day of the township. So we can schedule people and move resources around to make sure that the day, it really flows very well. I would like to recommend, there is a typo in the, in the memo to the board. There's an extra zero in there. The comma's in the correct place, but there is an extra zero. I would like to recommend BioCare at a total price of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And with that, our, our ten percent cost share is only ninety-six hundred and twenty-eight dollars as a result of that grant.
Anybody have any questions? I look for a motion.
Great. Great use of assets and keeping everybody healthy and being proactive. So make the motion.
Motion by Trustee Barnett. Support by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Next, we have the introduction of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five water rates, presented by Noah Mahalsky, the Director of Public Works. And it's just an introduction, so we won't be voting.
Good evening, everyone. To be here. Get right into it. Okay, so talking water rates for this year. I'll give you some kind of time and place and background stuff, and then we'll get into this year's kind of situation. So first, you know, we kind of get asked all the time, why do we pay a different rate than other communities around here, right? And that's basically size, scale, and scope, right? When I say that, a lot of stuff, rates are homegrown, right? And they have a lot to do with how a community was developed, how, how business philosophies, philosophies and capital improvement and investment on the system, level of the service desires for the community. All those things can impact the rate. Additionally, we have overall less people on our system paying into each mile of pipe. So what I mean by that, if you go to Birmingham, whereas they have two hundred and fifteen customers paying in for each mile of water main pipe, in Bloomfield Township, we only have a hundred and thirty-three customers paying in for each mile of pipe, right? So if you have more people paying in, more customers, so what does that say about the community, right? It says that we're a spread-out community as compared to Birmingham, Troy, those other communities that are more dense. So we have a bigger system to serve less customers, right? So we have to pay more to take care of that system, right? Additionally, thirty-nine percent of our overall usage for the entire year is irrigation-based. That is abnormal and remarkable. Okay? Four, nearly forty percent of our overall usage for the year is irrigation. That is very abnormal, and irrigation drives our system. Okay? Other key, and what I mean by that, max day peak hour, think the hottest day and the thirstiest day. We get charged based on that day, right? The most we can take in a day and the thirstiest hour within that day drives our rate, right? Distance and elevation from the source is key. We don't have a water treatment plant. We can't build one. We're kind of pot-committed to the Detroit system, and that system is thirty miles away and two hundred and fifty feet lower than us. It literally takes a pump fifty times bigger to pump the water to us than it does down in Detroit. So infrastructure costs to pump the water and get it up to us. Flow data, elevation, all that stuff plays in, our, our kind of hunger or usage of the water. We have very little commercial. So we can't, in a city like Livonia, they can couch some costs in their commercial entities. We can't do that here because we don't have a large commercial base. So just, and our units, we use thousand gallons. Some other communities use a hundred cubic feet. That's only seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So if your community uses a hundred, or another community uses a hundred cubic feet, you're, you're only getting sixty percent or, you know, a percentage of our total unit. So your units is different. It's like, if you went to Canada and thought you were getting a deal on gas, well, no, they just sell it by the leader. So it's cheaper and you got to pay more. It's a different unit, right? Then you see kind of an overview of our customer base, what I kind of said, fifteen, you know, predominantly residential, those three hundred and fifty sewer-only customers, that'll come down with South Bloomfield Highlands, thirty-two-hundred secondary meter program participants, which are not charged fixed fees, and then twenty-six-hundred water-only customers. So people where sewer is not available within the township. So that kind of illustrates the push and pull factors for rate. And then again, the fact that they're really homegrown and the level of service plays a critical, you know, kind of factor in the rate as well. Just a summary, tonight, we're introducing the water rates. I plan to come back on April eighth to have those rates approved, addressing any issues that might come up tonight. And then the rates become effective. It's a quirk of the billing, right? They become effective, but we don't send the billing out until the end of April. So that's why I can come to you in April and get a rate approved. And I'm basically like a week late, because they go into effect in April and the bills are basically produced and ran during that month of April and they go out at the end. So that allows us that extra time. And I'll have the resolutions available for you next week as well to, that kind of reflect the increases. I'll just give you some basic acronyms here, because it is jargon and a lot of, it can get a little, get a little bit confusing if you're not in this world. So Water and Sewer, that's, we're talking about our operations there, our Water and Sewer Department or the Water and Sewer Rates, but that W N S is Water and Sewer. O N M, think my staff, think internal operations and maintenance, think the frontward face of your system, the eight employee, well, now up to eight employees that make up the water division within D P W and respond to all the emergencies, calls for service, all that stuff. Our billing unit, a thousand gallons again, that's critical. Again, other communities charge in cubic feet. Even West Bloomfield has a weird thousand cubic feet unit. So you got to be very careful when you look at the units between communities. They are not the same. C I P, Capital Improvement Program. I talked about our support and our level of service here in Bloomfield Township. It is high. We, it's not okay to have multiple water main breaks. That's a, you know, that is not within our level of service. Our residents expect to have water when they turn on the spigot, and we expect to deliver that. So and that's indicative on your guys' approach of investing in your system, right? And we've seen that on Long Lake Road in the last couple of years, and you'll see it elsewhere too. So Evergreen Farmington Sanitary Drain, that's our sewer provider, our sewer, that's what it's called. W R C is the entity who runs that sewer. Water Resource Commission, Great Lakes Water Authority is the one who produces the water. Saqua is the one who delivers the water to our border through a consortium. So all right, so calculating the rate is a, kind of a simple endeavor when it, at its base, right? It's a division equation of your costs over what you feel you're going to use throughout the year. But then life kind of makes that simple exercise more complicated. And that's when you mix in your level of service. You mix in your operations and maintenance staff. You mix in your debt that you're accruing to take care of your system, right? And then you also look at your usage, which in, since the late eighties, the usage has been going down. So if you have a smaller denominator, your costs are always going to go up, right? So we're in a paradigm where since the late eighties, usage in water has been going down. And if your denominator goes down, you're going to pay more on the top, right? Total, or key kind of considerations then. Two hundred and twenty-five M C F, a thousand M C F, that's what we use as our estimation on what we're going to use throughout the year. It's a nominal declining trend. So as I indicated, since the late eighties, due to green conservation and also due to E P A mandates on water consumption, usage has been going down. And that's reflective of the national, it's a trend within all water utilities. Meter equivalency unit, this is a basis for proportionalizing the fixed fee portion of our rate only. This replaced the R E U proportionalization system in two thousand twenty-one. This is only, has an impact on the fixed fee portion of the rate, not the variable commodity portion. Again, as I commend you, a high level of investment within the system. So we have very few relative water main breaks or interruptions in that system. So focus on the meter replacement program, resident benefits of accountability for accuracy of the water, leak detection, the Eye on Water app really puts them in kind of the driver's seat on their water usage and their notifications. Additionally, the meter program will allow us to collect the data that we need to move forward in our rate structure. So we have a big focus from an O N M standpoint on, on that. And then our reserve goals are there as well to kind of be a guide for us year to year. And I'll give you some more, more meat and potatoes on that as I get a little farther in here. So then breaking down the bubbles, our commodities, our Saqua is our supplier of water. W R C is the supplier of sewer. Saqua, we benefit by them being a consortium, and we benefit by them having the big elevated tanks in Birmingham. They have enough storage to make that advantageous in our rate. And we've saved a significant amount of money by being part of that consortium. W R C, the sewer provider, what I'll note about that is sewer charges are one hundred percent fixed. So regardless of any water going down the pipe or consumed by our customers, we have fixed charges that are due within the sewer system. That's, they have meters within the mainline sewers, and they apportion out the flow per communities, and they charge us back for that in any given year. Township O N M, again, this is our frontward face to the residents, right? They never see W R C at their door unless it's a drain that they have issue with. You'll see a township employee, we handle mist dig, that's protecting our system, right? Emergency response, system operations, right? Additionally, we've got some bond debt in there. My predecessor, Wayne Dominy, in our engineering department, took out some bonds to kickstart our capital improvement program. And then we have additional ongoing capital improvements, whether, because we're inspecting our sewers both internally and a contractor, and/or we'd be, just we have our twenty-year capital improvement plans that drive that planning. And engineering is ramping up. They got a new director a year ago. We're seeing that in the spends coming up in the next couple of years. So I'll, I'll kind of tell you a little bit more about that. But what I can say from the meter program standpoint and from engineering as things are ramping up to a high degree. All right, so we, these numbers, I had better information in Jan, well, more favorable to the township information in Jan- in January, but then they came back and told me all those numbers were out. So that's why you see Saqua, they estimated, I believe, three percent in January. And then I just follow up with them last week and they're gonna give us a four and a half percent increase from their end, which will be able to mitigate a little bit. The sewer charges, we're expecting a three percent increase. And we're gonna have to raise that rate a little bit and I'll tell you why, cause we're gonna be doing a sewer heavy capital improvements this year that are gonna drive up that sewer side of the rate, so. Um, and additionally, these are all best projections right now. Their rates are not approved by their boards until June. So these are best guesses at this point, their fiscal year goes July through June thirtieth. So this is that endeavor of just trying to get as good as we can and lock everything in as close to the date as possible. So we don't have to come back. If we have to, if they do something wacky on us, we will come back to you guys and amend the rates. But they typically try to give me a good number here because they don't wanna have that all happen, that whole process, so. Um, more a little bit about DPW, so that's the fourteen in Farmington Hills up there on the top. That's the big transmission main and that's the one that blew up, uh, outside of Port Huron on the bottom. So that's what we're talking about is, I mean, we don't have pipes this big, but we have pipes of that material and we have pipes of that age, right? Um, but that's what we're talking about is typical O and M, right? We try to take care of it before it gets to this point, cause these are obviously failures to a large degree. I mean, the one on the top flooded out like four or five houses on the back end of that. Um, and we like to be ahead of these type of things. But you're talking typical O and M, customer service, manhole inspection, a lot of regulatory requirements that are required by the, either the EPA or the state government that we implement and put into place as part of a water system. Cross connection program, our lead programs that we have out there, which we don't have a problem with lead. And then we're under a consent agreement, um, because we're over our inlet capacity because our sewers are leaky. So, um, basically it's emergency response, O and M and regulatory, um, compliance for our DPW. Bridging into engineering's work and our own work, um, the capital improvement project. Uh, what I would say is again, ramping up and robust in the next two years at least. Um, and when I say that, I mean, they're designing water main that's gonna go down Maple Road from Losher to, uh, Evergreen or Cranbrook. Big expensive project under Maple Road, right? Werner Estates, that's a possible S A D that's coming up that they wanna get ahead of it and it's right across the road here. Uh, they wanna get ahead of that S A D project with a planned water main project that they had in the till. So they're designing that next year. Construction, either now or next year, we're looking at Lakewood Water Main, I think that's going right now, right? Okay, mid-April, so we're bridging right into the, and that's part of the problem too, these projects. We've got two large projects going on right now. So even our reserve numbers between now and the end of March are gonna be different because we're gonna incur large charges between now and then, right? And I'll get into a little bit more of that later, but construction, busy year next year. Lakewood Water Main, there's a, uh, nasty locational, uh, sanitary sewer repair that has to occur right where that wetland hugs up against Club Drive there. Uh, Square Lake Road, MDOT's having their pre-con meeting, cause they're closing Square Lake Road down. And we're gonna capitalize on them having Square Lake Road down and fix a few problems with our sewers in there. Uh, Auburn Hills, they're doing a water main project up in our northern border and it makes sense to make an interconnection with them so that when an emergency happens, we can react to that emergency more stoutly. Uh, so we're gonna do an emergency connection up there. Then there's a couple small rehab projects and, uh, an actual length of sewer we discovered, um, that are in there. They make up that Cranbrook sanitary sewer and then are just our overall sanitary program, so. Um, the mantra kind of here is, the more you look, the more you're gonna find and the more you're gonna have to fix, right? So it's that, becoming aware of these things by inspecting our sewers. We're putting, we're putting new technology into place to use sound waves to inspect the sewers. That's gonna really ramp up the amount of sewer we can inspect versus having to drop a camera down in it and do, you know, cleaning of the sewer and all that stuff. Additionally, we're employing contractors to come in and take a look at these sewers as well. My, my internal people are like the strike force, where they'll go in and they kind of find that there's a big problem. Then we pull back and we bring in a contractor or we mitigate the situation. That's kind of the paradigm that we're trying to set up, so. Again, I mentioned the meter replacement program, uh, the Eye on Water, the accuracy of billing, the real-time data, those are the kind of benefits to the customer. The data for our system, that's a huge benefit to the customer secondarily, but us as staff to make informed rate decisions. Uh, we're in year two of that three to five year program. It kind of depends, that one's ramping up too. Um, so it kind of depends on pressure applied. Um, so if I, um, threaten to shut off water, I usually get more people wanting to have their meter changed, right? So we have to have an aggressive program, uh, and, and we've had about fifty people, we sent out shut-off notices. Every single one of them have complied, right?
Before you send out any water, you, you have an extensive contacts, just so you know, cause I had asked that question of when are we sending these out? You send them, you call them, you email them, yeah.
Right, thirty days of notices, then we kind of, you know, we get it. When people see a flag come up in their yard or some spray paint, they generally call. So we're kind of slow playing that type of thing and all you gotta do is call in and make an appointment, right? So that's, uh, there are still people who haven't had their meter changed as part of the last meter replacement program that occurred before I was in the DPW, right? So there, there are stragglers from our last program even, that we gotta kind of clean up all those skeletons in the closet too. Cause we gotta get, we gotta make this a full program, you know, so, um. And again, that's key to just, we're not gonna be sitting here for fifteen years doing a meter replacement program and then we gotta replace them again, right? They have a shelf life, so. Um, cash reserves, so our goal is to maintain six million dollars for emergencies and seven million dollars for O and M. O and M, that's seven million there, think of that, there's hit, so a lot of our costs come in on a monthly basis, but we don't bill our customers or until quarterly, right? So we're accruing these charges over a monthly basis. We need cash flow to basically smooth out those hills and valleys of what we're being charged, right? So O and M money in there, a seven million, that's just to cover the ins and the cash flow balances, uh, throughout any given month or three-month period within the water, right? Then the six million, so really that money's not there in month one and then it'll be there in month three, once we kind of charge our bills out, right? Um, emergencies, that is what it is, right? Those big pictures of, you know, the big pipe that blew up in Port Huron, the sinkhole on, you know, up there in McComb that happened a few years ago, that's for those type of projects. The surplus, uh, we're, we're gonna, we tried last year to get rid of it. We failed, right, from, for a few different reasons. One, I'll blame myself, we didn't, we couldn't ramp the meter replacement program up, right? So we're now ramping it up, the enforcement. Additionally, um, the economy, um, there's, we went through, A, um, materials are tough to get, that delays projects. Additionally, engineering, um, knowledge from a, uh, company standpoint is very limited right now. They all have a lot of work to do, right? So us nailing down when the deadlines are gonna go and get in front of people to do designs a year earlier, that's a new type of paradigm that's brought about by this. Heavy work, um, low staff resources kind of paradigm that we're in. And then it all kind of, once you get the project to where it's bid out, then you're waiting on pipe and stuff like that. So again, I think in the way these rates are projected, we're gonna use that three point, and that three point five million is like right now, between now and the end of the year, things are gonna happen to take that down. And then additionally, the, um, the work we have planned next year should eliminate all of that, um, that surplus. That's the goal. Um, again, these philosophies and policies, right? If we say as a staff that we should have thirteen million in our reserves, we need to live by that policy, right? And so this is living by that policy. Um, and engineering is gonna complete a lot of work on the back of that next year, so. Um, we do look at this yearly and take a look at our, what our reserve balance is, starting in March, kind of what we're projecting throughout the end of the year. And then it mixes in with our twenty-five year and kind of twenty-year plans. So between now and the end of the month, we're projecting like one point four or five million dollars possibly of, of charges coming in. So that just kind of gives you a scale on the type of work we got going around, around the, we got a million and a half dollars of work going on right now around the township. All right, so that's the top end, the revenue portion of the equation. And then the bottom end is simply how much water are we gonna use? You know, we're pretty much, we, we have a contract with Saqua and it is a great relationship. In the first several years of the relationship, we saved over ten million dollars through buying through that consortium. Um, we, we just, so they get the water to our borders and then we distribute it to our customers, right? Sewage is a little bit more sticky, cause W R C owns some of the pipes going, the interceptor lines going through the township and we own the smaller lines coming off of that. So it's a little more nebulous with, uh, W R C on who's his who's. But, um, the kind of kicker here is, is that, um, we're, we can't build a sewer treatment plant in Bloomfield Township and we can't, we don't have a readily available source of water, right? We're not on a Great Lakes border, we can't build our, we have, we can't make the infrastructure investment, uh, to build a, a water treatment plant at this point. Nobody wants it in their backyard, all that type of stuff. So, um, we're pretty much committed to buying the water from Great Lakes Water ultimately. And our sewer will be taken care of by Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner. So we're pretty much, at this point in the game, are committed to that. And Flynn kind of showed us what happens when you try to go down that, another road, so. Um, and speaking of that, this is just, this is the largest sewer treatment plant in the world down in Detroit. Um, we, you know, we kind of follow industry standards. This is that indicative, that twenty-year trend in the township. So this is our actual usage and it's a clear declining trend, that's not abnormal. And then here is the data that makes, that shows us, you know, we're lucky in Michigan that we don't water during the winter. So we can, that's how we can tell you that forty percent of our overall usage is irrigation, right? We compare non-irrigation months to irrigation months. So every single user, even if they don't irrigate, is paying more in their rates for the irrigators here. All right, so the grand finale, this is, so we were able to mitigate the three and a half percent raise down to two percent in water. Um, we had to come up slightly in sewer from what our suppliers, and that is directly related to the capital improvement projects that are going on, that are more heavily weighted towards sewer. And in the cash flow wise, that, these increases will mean if the projections come in good, that we will use that surplus amount in our reserve at this point. So this is what you're gonna see basically within the resolutions when I come back on the eighth of April.
Um. Noah, can I ask a question? So the sewer flat rate is going down.
It shouldn't be, might be a typo.
Maybe it's reversed?
No, it's a four percent increase, right?
I'll check, I'll make, I'll make sure on that, within the resolution, they'll be the same, they will be correct.
This table is something done nationally, right? We, we're not deciding like the one inch meter, that water, uh, charge and then the one and a half inch going to ninety.
That utilizes the A W W A standard to proportionalize the fixed fee charges, yes. And that's where you get that meter equivalency unit from. Basically tells the flow of the water and proportionalizes that flow. And that's where we get at that theorem, that potential draw upon the system and these irrigators costing everybody more, right? And that's where that kind of comes into play, so. So again, I will check the flat sewer fee rate. Check. Uh, next steps, I'll be here on the eighth, again, to recommend rates for approval to reflect those numbers. Again, corrected on that sewer flat fee, that's where the rubber meets the road, right? When we approve those resolutions, I'll have those prepped and ready. Uh, and then the rates will be effective April first. We do have like a, we could go to that second meeting in April, but I don't want any of that to happen, so. Right, any questions at all?
So no question, uh, first I'll say, as, uh, you know, somebody who lives in Bloomfield, I would not, and, and somebody who drinks straight out of their faucet with no filter, I would not want anybody in charge of my water system other than Director Maholsky, so I'll just start with that. Um, when we had our, I had a chance to meet with Director Maholsky to talk about the water rates. And in that meeting, I expressed my, uh, you know, cause I, I don't know if concern is the right word, but we ended up choosing the meter equivalency unit as our metric for our fixed cost. Uh, we did that in an effort to be more fair, we, we moved from the REU, um, metric. And for me personally, from what I have seen, I don't, I don't believe that it's a fairer metric to use, the MEU. So, you know, I know that there's so many different metrics that we can use. Obviously, Rev Telus recommended MEU. The board has decided that until we get to a position where we can do monthly billing and we have the data to, uh, know what to charge people, because the number one concern is having money to run the system as it's been running for the last, you know, decades that I've lived in Bloomfield and how we want it to run into the future. Um, with that said, I don't know that I will be able to approve a rate that uses MEU only because I don't think it's more fair than what we had originally been doing. And I understand the, you know, board position, I understand why you've presented it as is. Um, but I don't believe it's an appropriate metric and I'll just leave it at that for now.
Anybody else? Um, the only thing I wanted to point out is that I appreciate that you're doing these emergency connections. So whether it helps us or the other communities, um, for example, most recently, we were able to help Bloomfield Hills. Uh, last year, they were out, they would have been out of water for a very long time if we didn't have an emergency connection to help them survive. So, uh, knowing that we help others, I'm glad that others are willing to help us now as well.
Oh yeah, water goes both ways.
Exactly, right. So these emergency connections, whether it's a receiver or a sender, I'm happy that you're connecting with others as well.
And it's proven operations of the system for redundancy, for sure.
Did you have a question about that?
Well, a question about, uh, I know we spoke about the sound waves versus, um, the cameras when we got together and Paul spoke about it. And can you just talk a little more about how much more effective it is? And also the fact that it's, uh, it, it really saves on, um, the amount of money we have to spend. We're getting more value out of the sound waves.
Yeah, so instead of sending our equipment down into the sewer, we'll, uh, send a sound wave through the sewer. It's proven technology, it will find blockages, it will find defects in the pipe. And thousand, seven thousand linear feet of pipe inspected in a day versus hundreds of feet of, linear feet of pipe in a day. And our, we don't have to put our hundred and fifty thousand dollar camera into jeopardy within the sewer. We just had a contractor break a camera off in our sewer. Uh, and they had to go back in and get it, or a, a cleaning device off in the sewer. So there's, it's less risky, less risky for staff, there's no confined space entry, that type of stuff. We're sending the sound wave down and that's like our sentinel. So then if we see something, we have come across one, I mean, and Paul, uh, used this technology at Redford Township and kind of perfected it, um, with the people who invented it, right? So, and we're actually pushing this technology across the country now as well, um, through our insurance partner. Um, so it's, um, very much more efficient and it does find, it doesn't miss the stuff. So it's like, you know, instead of sending the sentinel down, we can use sound waves and it literally sounds kind of like a whale in the pipe. And it's the, basically if the sound is blocked to some degree, then there's some sort of defect within the pipe. And the equate, uh, it can tell the difference between like a minimal blockage or a full-on something that we need to get in there right away. So it's a good, even like, let's say the scenario where there's a, uh, a backup, right? It's middle of the night, it's raining, right? We don't have to mobilize three or four people, we can do it with like a group of two and they don't have to enter into the sewers. So it's a big, big boon for us.
Really is, okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then just to finish on the, um, emergency connection, so just so you all know too, we don't pay for that water that went to Bloomfield Hills, they pay for the usage that went to Bloomfield Hills, so the.
Yep, and they would have had to go to a boil water and they would have had to prohibit, um, irrigation for the entire summer last year, so. And that's how, once you go to a boil water. And that's how, once you go to a boil water, you failed.
And we did actually, uh, we did actually get an agreement with the city manager that they would not do irrigation while we were on because that affects our water pressure. And if you're helping somebody to have daily water, the irrigation is not necessary. So we actually did with um.
Yep. And we won't do anything that, you know, hinders operation of our system, our customers or our customers, you know? So uh, we, you know, and we won't do anything obviously to bring pressures down where there's a regulatory issue or anything like that.
But they were very receptive where when we did notice there was a lot of irrigation still happening in Bloomfield Hills while they were on our emergency, reaching out to their city manager, he immediately sent out some public information. Again, I'm saying you can't do this for a little while. So.
And that's interesting. We do have some control because we look at our usage and we do this because we're nerds and Paul's a bigger nerd than me. But it, people are irrigating during that eleven to five. It's clear. We can see it shut off. We can see it turn on very readily apparent within the data, right? And that just solidifies that heavy, heavy irrigation um backbone to a kind of our customer base, right? And I kind of, kind of feel like this is a product that's supposed, you know, we die after three days of not having it and it, you know, and you need it, right? But people are dumping it on the ground to a large extent.
There are only a couple of other things I wanted to touch on too, just to clarify. So when you mentioned low staff resources, just to remind everybody, he's not referring to our engineering. We are fully staffed finally, which is great. Uh, I believe we have about seven people now. But I believe you're referring to engineering companies that we use and consulting firms such as HRC.
Or even just the whole climate out here. I mean, I've done more hiring in the last two years than I ever have, right?
We've been hiring, yes. We're not, we're not.
There's a lot of transient people. There's a lot of um, they need to staff up and so, and they can. And that's a staffing problem, right? And so it's not even just kind of maintaining status quo. It's reacting to this higher level of work that's necessary out there. You know, ARPA funds that allow people for shovel ready projects that are now going in the ground, right? There's, it's a lot different than a recession type environment where the people are more hungry to come to you for the work. So.
Just to clear that up, we don't have low staff resources in engineering. Um, another one which we kind of touched on was the water shut off notices. Those are a last ditch effort after people have ignored many things um being brought to attention. Believe you guys send multiple letters. Uh, if we have phone or emails, we contact that way. You try with the flags. Um, and eventually then the letter does get sent on that. Um, the other one is uh, what was mentioned is why don't you do something about monthly if you have the data? Something such as the Bloomfield Hills water issue would have skewed the data that year. Um, we've also had the fire at Oakland Hills. So the reason we say we don't have data is we want years worth of data to look for anomalies, take those out and charge appropriately. So we have limited data of actual usage based on the people that have their meters. But until you get the actual usage meters from the community, that would be what about four years worth? How many years worth of data do you need to?
Three, four. We need to have a statistical relevant population that has the meter in place. So we can even determine what our usage patterns are, right? And that's critical when you go to a tier grade because you have to set the tiers correctly or else you kind of end up with a ladder that has one step this big and another step's that big and then the next one's that big, right? Um, so to make the educated guess on the tiering, we have to have that data. We didn't need that data to proportionalize the MEU units. We need that data to know more about our usage and the characteristics of that usage. So.
And the data is about that. When you told me how accurate it is down to, you know, changing even just the air into the pipe, it is amazing, the data. The people who do already have these meters and they have access to the app that lets them know about their water usage. It's not just to warn people like um Treasure Showstack who had a leak as quick as possible, but you can see fluctuations even within the water within your pipe. It's amazingly accurate.
The new meters are so accurate, they can uh get the thermal expansion of the water within the pipe, right? So we come up, we, it's an anomaly when we have some of these new meters put in that it shows like a leak of like five gallons of water over a four hour period. We know that that's, or three gallons, we know that that's an anomaly. That's not a leak, right? That's the actual water in the meter going back and forth from a day to night kind of thermal expansion or coming from the cold ground into the warm house will actually move the pipe will, the water will expand within that pipe. So.
And once we get that data, and you guys will hear relatively statistical uh or statistically relevant data also in our strategic plan. That data will help us get off of the fixed fees to a larger extent so that it is more about what everybody wants, including us up here of of actual real usage is what you're charged for.
Yeah. And I had a conversation with uh with Raftellus about what it would take, right? Like, when are we going to reach that tipping point? He was talking about ninety to ninety-five percent of the meters in due to the, like, if we had a, he explained it to me. Like, if we had a very uh large, like, if we were flip flopped from our residential or our commercial base, we'd be able to uh implement a tiered rate based on our commercial usage in a very short era. We'd only need forty percent or so of those commercial entities. But the usage is so variable with the residential use and variable throughout the year. This kind of presents this, businesses fit into categories a lot easier than our residents do. So, basically.
And then the last thing to point out is um, I've gotten questions about, and actually with you pointing out today, almost forty percent of irrigation. People have asked that question. Well, if there's only three thousand people irrigating, it's only three thousand with meters. Or we still have people with pools that have to fill up their pools. You have people that irrigate that don't have secondary meters. So that it doesn't mean they have to have a secondary. Because I've gotten that call a couple of times of how could it be that high with just three thousand?
Yeah, no, that's a small fraction of taking advantage of the secondary meter paradigm to kind of get out of the sewer uh costs.
Whether it's you're getting their ground or filling pools or anything like that, it all adds up in the summer.
And it's really a cost benefit analysis with the individual resident because there is some cost to doing it. Like what it would take for plumbing wise versus how much you use in a given year. That's, you know, you got to figure out that cost benefit.
Anyone else have questions for Noah?
I just wanted to thank Noah, um, seconding a lot of what uh Trustee Fakie said that, you know, I, you and I have worked together. We've emailed back and forth. We've met in your office many times. Um, what you and your department does, it's much more complex and I think people understand. And I'm really glad you're leading the department. I appreciate it. Um, we got a very early notice about our meter replacement. And so I immediately responded, got an appointment like the next day. Guy came out early, certainly on time, in and out, simple, easy. Um, you know, I highly recommend just the first time you get that notice, if you can, the appointments were wide open and it was easy and it's done.
Yeah. And it's not like, you know, other utility providers where they're going to give you like a four hour window and you kind of got to sit around with them. When they give you a time, that's the time they're going to show up and be there.
Yeah, this was like ten thirty to eleven. It was like a twenty, thirty minute appointment and he even showed up a few minutes early. And it was done. He was super pleasant and uh it was, it was very easy to do it. So I, you know, it's not, not worth putting off.
They're a good part, that's for sure. So.
Any questions?
So um, I know there's, this is going to be a very difficult, difficult question, not an easy answer, I suppose. Um, but it's important to a lot of people. It ha, it comes down to what's the timeline that to, between now and when will we get information that's going to allow us to go to a tiered system? Um, I just heard you say we need ninety percent of the meters in with with the new uh measuring system. Uh, and then we need three years of data?
No, we'll start getting that data immediately when these meters go in. We've already begun collecting the data, right? So we just need to get to that sample size with the meters going in. The meter program was designed as a five year meter program. We're in year two of that. So generally, definitely by the time we get to year five.
We're on track that by year five, we'll have the data we need to reconsider the the structure we have now and move.
Right. And as we become more aggressive, we can trim a year off of that, right? I just can't tell you right now that that's going to happen. Um, additionally, you know, something could happen with supply chains on the meters and we could fall short of that too.
Supply chain has already been an issue for us.
Now, we've got, if you've seen our garage, we've got inventory. So I'm not worried about that. Right? So.
So that's uh, just from my standpoint, I mean, I liked the, you know, this model over the prior model for a couple of reasons. Um, it did reduce the fixed rate, fixed fee part of the overall bill. So less of the water rates are fixed and more are variable. That was important. Um, I do think this system of of the of the meter size is is fairer. I mean, that's all in the eye of the beholder, I know, but it, but everything I heard, I think it's fair. But critically to me, I, you know, because if, you know, if I could do it my way, I would, we would have a, I'd be one hundred percent usage and and fully tiered immediately. But I'm, I hear and I've heard since we started this conversation, this really isn't possible to do it in a fair, accurate way for everybody involved. And then we need time.
And there's a hazard to the system.
I supported this model because it was temporary. So that's really important that we stay on track to keep this moving to to a tiered usage based system. That, you know, we'll all decide what that is. But for me anyway, I, you know, those are the three reasons why I thought I, you know, why I supported beforehand, why I continue to support it. But the last one is, and most important one is, this is temporary.
Yep. Uh, so the general plan here, I typically, when you do a rate study, it's got a five year shelf life and they project out for five years. So when we had that study done, the eye is on the next five year cycle to consider again full scale rate changes. And you could, that's when all bets are off, right? So you better do your homework between now and then because um you can have, just like you said, no fixed fees, right? Right? But then that's all variable and then your risk is higher on the system, right? So you better have the right answers on where to put the tiers, right? So you put pressure on that in that way, right? Plus um, there's fixed costs to our system, right? So you've got to determine whether some sort of fixed fee makes sense. Uh, it probably does in my opinion, just because again, one hundred percent of our sewer is fixed. Uh, debt is all fixed within the system, uh CIP investment, right? Those are some, I think a case can be made for that. But I think that discussion is farther down, right? We could just do a straight up like DTE does. You're a low user or a high user, right? Now, DTE has some distribution money hidden in there too. But they basically have two classes. You're either a low user or a high user. We could do that as long as we felt like we could derive the revenue from the system, right? I think more equitably, you have more tiers to that variable rate. How many tiers? Twenty? Fifty? Four? I don't know, right? We need to let the data drive that, I think. Because that'll become, I mean, it'll be messy, right?
No doubt. That'll be a big decision for the future board when they're sitting here. But from my standpoint, it's just important that we stay on track or we're faster than we said in getting the data we need to make the next decision.
By all means, if I get to two twenty thousand customers got new meters in year three, we'll be making a move. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's why it was scary with those water shut off notice when that discussion came up, but that was the way the.
Yeah, again, we're, the the eye is to get them to comply, right? So.
Any other questions?
No, other than just saying, I just want to um piggyback what Martin said because I think everybody who supported uh the water rates um that were adopted previously and changed the modality was based on the fact that it was a temporary um type of um process we were going to use or formula until we had the data. And I would support that we get the data as quickly as possible because again, I think most people on the board would prefer a usage um as far as uh how we calculate the uh water amount, but still understand you have to get us the data, but hopefully uh sooner rather than later.
So we'll see you back here on April eight.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have considering the lighting options for the twenty twenty-three Jan Roncelli Safety Path Route from Telegraph Road from Humphrey Avenue to Clint River Trail, presented by our uh township engineer Angela Heisinger. And we also have Karen Stickler here from HRC.
Good evening. Um, we're here today to revisit the lighting options for the twenty twenty-three Jan Roncelli Safety Path Route. Um, if you recall back in January, Corey Almas was up here before you. He presented three different lighting styles, one being the Bollard style lighting. There's a decorative slash park style option and then the commercial lighting option. At that meeting, the board had unanimously decided to eliminate the consideration of the commercial style lighting, but had requested the engineering department come back to provide further information on both the Bollard and decorative style lights. Um, so that's why we're here tonight. Before I get into the lighting options, I do just want to refresh the board on what the twenty twenty-three safety path route is. It does begin at Humphrey Avenue and head in a northwest direction along the southbound lanes of Telegraph Road. And then uh diverts to the southwest direction, heading through the vacated portion of the Deuceaux Road right away, which is known as the Paper Road for this particular project. It then continues northwest along Mawward Avenue, crossing over Orchard Lake Road, continuing along Pontiac Drive until it connects to the Clint River Trail. And the proposed lights that will be installed on this path is the um portion of the route within that paper road, which is a heavily dense and vegetated uh plot of land. Uh, one of the que, the requests from the board was for us to come back with photos of how the paper road lot appears out um at the site at today. Um, so we had Alex Kozlowski from our office go out and take some photos. So this first photo is of him standing on Lafayette Avenue, looking in a northeast direction towards the paper road. Um, if you really squint, you can see the Oakland Veterinary Building um through the trees there. That's located on the opposite side of Telegraph Road.
Right in the middle.
Yeah. Um, and then this is another photo of uh Alex. He's now standing within the paper road lot, still looking in that northeast direction towards Telegraph Road. You can see the lot is comprised mainly of smaller diameter trees. And then there's a lot of fallen tree trunks, sticks, leaves and uh scrub shrub of that nature. And then this is just another um photo taken within the paper road lot, standing on where the proposed safety path route will be looking towards Telegraph Road. This is a photo now looking in the easterly direction towards the rear yards of eleven ninety and eleven eighty Edison Avenue. Those are the two residential lots closest to Lafayette Avenue. And this is another photo looking east now at the rear yards of eleven sixty-two and eleven forty Edison Avenue, which are the two lots that um are closer to Telegraph Road. And then in the opposite direction, we're looking west towards the rear yard of eleven seventy-five Atkinson Avenue. And then these last two photos is of the, where the paper road abuts the right of way of Telegraph Road. So this is looking southeast along Telegraph Road. And conversely, this is looking northwest along the Telegraph Road on ramp. So getting into the first of the two lighting options, we'll talk about the decorative style light. Based on the comments made by the board at the last meeting, we have chosen the decorative light style shown in this photo below. Um, this light was chosen because of the way that it casts a downward um light on the safety path specifically, as well as the immediately adjacent surrounding area. Um, taking into consideration, trying to minimize the amount of light that may become a nuisance to the adjacent residential properties. So with this light style, there's uh estimated installation costs of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred five dollars for fourteen of these particular light posts. And the estimated annual operating cost is between five hundred and fifty and six hundred dollars. The next um few slides are going to show some rendering photos of the safety path that traverses through the paper route portion of the um entire route. These renderings were prepared by HRC. Um, the first two here depict an aerial view of the route at uh daylight and also when it's dark. The um rendering of the dark path obviously shows how much of that path is illuminated by the decorative style light. And then here is a profile view of the safety path through the paper road route with the decorative style light installed on the left hand side of the path. Um, I do want to mention that the vegetation shown in these renderings, uh, the trees that are six inches in diameter or larger are reflective of actual trees that are located on that site in their as surveyed locations. All of the smaller vegetation is meant to portray the regrowth of the native vegetation once the path is installed. Um, that gives the path a more uh natural look to it, almost kind of like if you were going through a nature trail. And I say that because this next rendering is of the same profile view of the safety path. However, we've maintained a clearing area on each side of the path that will be uh continuously mowed. Um, it kind of opens up the path more, giving it a more um manicured look to it. So while we're here today for the board to decide on a particular lighting style that they would like to see along the safety path, we'd also appreciate any input the board may have. we'd also appreciate any input the board may have as to whether they prefer the uh, native vegetation coming all the way up to the path, or if you prefer the more open look of um, a manicured lawn on each side of the path. Uh, this is uh, the same rendering, but it's now uh, at dusk. So you can see how much of the path and surrounding area is lit up by the decorative light post. Again, this is showing the vegetation coming right up to the safety path. This is the same rendering, but it's with all of the vegetation removed, showing you a more open area on each side of the path. And this is another rendering that shows actual pedestrians utilizing the path at night. Um, you can see that the gentleman who is at the forefront of this rendering, when he gets under the light, uh, it really illuminates his full frontal profile view, and you can clearly make out uh, well, maybe not because it's really far away, but if you're looking at the picture close, you can really make out his uh, facial features. Um, and again, this is a rendering with the vegetation coming up to the safety path limits. Here is that same rendering with um, the vegetation pulled back. It kind of exposes more of the path deeper into the lot, so you can make out more of the other pedestrians that are utilizing the path. And then um, HRC also provided two video renderings of this portion of the safety path. I'm only going to choose one of the two, because the only difference between them is that one of the videos shows the vegetation, the other video doesn't. But if you want me to show the second one after you've seen the first, I'm more than happy to. The video does go through a time lapse, so at the start of the video, it's daytime, and by the time you get to the end, it's night. So you kind of really get the feel of what it would be like to walk this path at any time of the day or night. And stop playing on your screen. So this is the portion of the path up against Lafayette Avenue. So we're heading towards Telegraph Road in this video.
And this is the one with the vegetation, right?
No, this is actually with the rear on each side, yeah.
This was though by graphic artist who thinks people are way more stylish than they are walking.
So if you want, I can show the other uh, video rendering with the vegetation if you'd like, otherwise I can. All right. So the last thing that was requested by the board was to provide a photometric plan of each style render uh, lighting. So I know it's hard to make out on this screen, but engineering department worked with HRC to put together these photometric plans. And basically, the takeaway is that at the outermost limits of that light, it is all remaining within the paper road lot, with the exception of there is some spillover into the Lafayette Road right of way. But we're not really so concerned about that, because it's not going to be any type of nuisance to the adjacent residents. So um, moving into the second of the two options, which is the Ballard style lighting, uh, the engineering department just went with the most practical option, which would be to utilize the same style ballards as what's seen all around Township Campus. Uh, so this picture should look familiar to you. It is the ballards located right out here in front of Town Hall. The estimated installation cost to install twenty-one of these Ballard posts is a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. That's about a thirty-two thousand dollar decrease in installation cost from the decorative post style. Um, however, the estimated annual operating costs for these Ballard style posts is six hundred to six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is more than the decorative style lights. And again, I'm just gonna fly through the same renderings.
Angel, is that per unit or total cost of the entire system is six hundred to six hundred and fifty per year?
It's total cost, total.
Okay, so we're talking about like a hundred dollar difference.
So it would take like six hundred. I just did the math, it'll take us about six hundred years to make up the difference.
Six hundred.
Six hundred and forty, to be exact.
So these again are the aerial view of the path utilizing the Ballard style lighting. It shows you how much of the path and surrounding area will be illuminated at night with the Ballard posts. This is the profile view of the photo rendering for the safety path with the Ballard shown on the left-hand side, again, with the vegetation identified on each side of the safety path. And then this is the rendering without the vegetation. Uh, this is a night view of the safety path with the Ballard style lighting, again, with vegetation shown. And then the Ballard style lighting without vegetation. And then here again is the rendering showing the pedestrian. And uh, the case of the ballards, you can still get a good visual of the gentleman's frontal profile view. However, there are more shadows casted upon his face. You can't make out those spatial features as well as you can with the decorative style lighting. And then this is that same rendering with the vegetation cleared. Again, you can really s- uh, see deeper into the lot, all of the other pedestrians that are utilizing that path with the removal of that vegetation. Play this video as well.
Really helpful. Very helpful.
HRC did a great job on those videos.
Yeah.
Um, and then this is again, the photometric plan for the Ballard style lights. In the case of the ballards, all of the light is retained on the paper road lot. There's no spillover into the private properties adjacent to it, or even the uh, public right of way for Lafayette. So with that, the Engineering and Environmental Services Department is seeking the board's selection of either the decorative slash park style lighting or Ballard style lighting options that they would prefer along the paper road portion of the Jan Roncelli Safety Path. If it helps in the consideration, I did put aside by-side rendering of both light styles. I can also go back to any of the other renderings that I presented on throughout this presentation. And then myself and Karen from HRC is here to answer any questions tonight.
Great presentation. Both of you did a fantastic job and provided a lot of information to make, I think, easier to make a decision. First of all, for myself, I think the native vegetation certainly is the choice I would select. I think it's just a lot more, you know, it works well in that area without having to, you know, cut the grass and everything. But I just think the na- natural look looks really nice. As far as the two choices of lights, the, I mean, I like the fact that uh, the Ballard is such a significant saving in cost. However, um, the decorative, I just feel gives more light. It's safer. You can see the person or individuals there without any shadows. So that would be the choice I would select.
So one question, how are the lights gonna be turned on? Are they gonna be photometric that determines when they all turn on based on light that's there? Or is there a time where they're going to change when the light changes?
I think they're gonna be photometric to determine based on light. That's, that's what I am in my yard. I know, so you know, in the summertime, they don't turn on at six o'clock, in the wintertime, they do. So it'll be based on um, yeah, the photometric.
And it will be, all of them will be on one. So if I start to see that light is starting to be more dim in the um, shaded areas, all the lights will turn on to make sure it's in the path versus light by light.
I don't think we would determine that yet, but most likely it'll all be one, kind of one.
Okay, just because I don't want it to, we have that like time change or it gets, so it's a little too dusk. I want to make sure that that path is lit at appropriate time. I uh, echo what uh, my fellow trustee has said. I actually like the ba- um, the decorative park light, because it provides more of the light casting down. So there's less, I would say, more light that's on a person and can provide a full picture for people running, so that they, hopefully it's safer. I like the um, natural vegetation closer to the path for just cost and maintenance long term. This will give somebody more of a nature feel as they're running through that park. That's what I believe.
I agree as far as the um, having the native plantings right up on the um, path. And because of that, I'm also in favor of option one, the decorative light. Because having that vegetation, I think it's more important to have more illumination, and you get that with the decorative light. The renderings are very helpful. Um, also to see, because you need more ballards, it actually kind of looked, uh, kind of cluttered to me. So I think this gives a nice clean look, and it is well illuminated. And I think that illumination will serve well if we have the natural vegetation.
So I'm, I'm gonna be different here, apparently. The decorative, I think, does give better downward light. It does, if we're worried about safety, uh, being able to identify people, I don't think we're gonna have cameras in there. So from a safety standpoint, I like that better. But the Ballard lights, to me, are are just, they're lower, they're um, I find them more appealing. And in terms of the vegetation, you know, if you let the natural just grow, and we don't keep back any of it, even say three feet or five feet, we're gonna have junk and buckthorn and things all over the place. And you know, um, when we added onto our driveway, we cleared some of this woods, and it was like wide open. And I planted all these plants, and within about five years, the woods just came right to the edge of my driveway and drowned out all my plants and took over, and it was junk and buckthorn and hard to get rid of. So I would think if you have all that growing up and it will get taller, that's a negative to me. So I guess I'd like to see some of the clearing, because otherwise, you know, I think it's gonna kind of bury the path and make it less safe.
So uh, I'm gonna agree with Valerie on this one. I think the Ballard is the way to go. One, I think they're easier in terms of maintenance. I think we're gonna run into headaches with those decorative lights when there's storms and whatever, they're gonna require more maintenance. And just more headache uh, for our staff. I think the Ballard is provide the light, they provide enough light. And not to mention the fact that they're well over thirty thousand dollars cheaper. So uh, for those reasons, I'm in favor of the Ballard lights. But I will, you know, support the board here.
What's your opinion of the vegetation?
Again, I agree with Valerie on this. I think if uh, if we let, let it get too much out of control, again, it's gonna need to come a maintenance headache.
Quick question. Um, durability, is there, do you have an opinion about the durability of the two lights that are offered? The equal, the maintenance and durability?
I think they're. I think they're gonna be pretty equal. I mean, this isn't places where cars should be, so none of them should get hit by cars. Um, that's, that's really what is a lot of problems with these, that there are sidewalks out here, or you know, they get bumped or they get hit more. I think they're gonna be pretty similar. Um, none of these are gonna last forever, so either way, we're probably gonna be looking at replacements in you know, ten years from now, fifteen, twenty years from now, uh, just because of the nature of lighting.
And thank you. My next question was, I don't know if I heard this right, but did I hear right? The beginning of the engineering was recommending the park lights?
We didn't make a recommendation.
Not a recommendation.
I think it was phrased of, this is our, it should have been, this is our first recommendation.
Oh, sorry, yeah. That was just the first of the two options. It wasn't indicative of like, this is our favorite.
Do you have a favorite?
So we actually did take a vote. And I don't want to tell you till the end what they did, but because they may need to be a tiebreaker. But they did, they did have a, we thought it was boys' vents, girls' at one point.
It was almost boys' and girls'.
One, all boys' like the other, but then the guy threw us off a little for our deciding.
One last question, I, whether it's sort of a lawn approach or a more garden-like approach, I'm guessing both of them are gonna require funds from the township to maintain them. Whether it's to, you know, make sure the buckthorn doesn't take over like it does everywhere and and mow it, right? I mean, both of those.
Yeah, if if we were to go with the clearing on each side of the safety path, we would just incorporate this route into our existing Safety Path mowing contract, because there's other Safety Path routes that we have to maintain. So this would just be included in that. If we allow the area to go back naturally, we could, if the board wanted to, you know, at some point, we, I mean, we're already gonna go out a couple times a year to check the um, status of the lighting, make sure everything's working. So at that time, we could also visually inspect the vegetation and cut back anything that might start to get unruly.
So here's what I think. I, I like the park-like lighting and the more area cleared. I think both of those in com- combined um, are safer. And um, you know, the, the grass and lawn is sort of consistent with township anyway feel. I don't think it attracts from it anyway, so.
So um, I, I actually have to say the aerial changed some ideas for me. When you actually drove through or rode through it, where I actually, I'm gonna still pick Ballard, but now I see the, that there is beauty to the others, because for me, the Ballard's seem more modern and nice. But um, I absolutely want the vegetation now, because as a person walking alone, when you did that aerial or when you did the fly-through with the vegetation at night, so by day, it's gorgeous. By night, it looks really dangerous, because you can only see one light ahead of you, because all the rest is vegetation. Whereas with either option at night, you could see very far down the path and on your sides to see if anybody's in the vegetation. See, especially for females, that's important in a wooded area, but for anybody, really, the safety. So I originally, I know when we were talking, I was like, native plants, perfect! And now I'm um, I'm one hundred percent that I personally see the value and the safety of the clearing. Plus, it's also on a maintenance, it's easier to consistently guarantee a maintenance when it's on a contract that exists versus hoping that we'll have people to clear it when it gets to be a problem. And then, like you said, it's still maintenance. So I actually am changing part of, I originally was all in on Ballard's and all in on native, but um, I'm gonna change to to actually separating it to the fifteen feet.
I think it's confusing, because native plants sounds nice. You know, we're all about native plants and what's, what grows well, like hostas in Michigan and things, but we're not gonna plant native plants.
No, it's just whatever's gonna.
No, it's like the buckthorn that's in there.
Probably know very well, there's a stretch of safety path that went in that I walk all the time. Mary will know this path right down Inkster Road. And when you guys first put it in, it's behind houses and it's just on the edge of Inkster. And it had to get, because of the landscape, it had to get built up, so you put split rails. And it was wide open and beautiful. I mean, there was nothing there. And over the years, it grows and it grows and it made a canopy, and I'm like, oh, this is pretty, yeah. And then like things start sticking out and poking you, and I walk with my pruners. And you know, then I don't know how or who, but then the split rails get broke, because I don't know if it's kids or deer. You can see there's deer paths through there. It takes over to the point that when it gets really bad, I report it, and they come out with that thing that like shears it back, because it literally just was growing right over the sidewalk. So I don't think that would be good there. I think that would make it more dangerous if we let it overgrow.
And just, when we first build the pla- path, we are doing all of the clearing, except for those six inch and larger diameter trees. Those are staying in place. Everything will be cleared. So it's just a question of how much growth do you wanna have come back? And I think that's something too, that if we keep it cleared for a couple of years, and then we decide, oh, we wouldn't mind a little bit of native. I mean, we can, we can make that decision too in the future. But when we first build the path, the whole about seventeen feet on either, either side of the path, except for those bigger trees, it's gonna be cleared, so.
And I think the trees, it's, it's, it could be beautiful too, but I, I think if it's just totally unmaintained, it's gonna get out of control.
It is. It's a lot, and I mean, the pictures that we showed of existing, those were taken in January when there's no growth, so.
So just to confirm, we're gonna do the path in seventeen feet on each side. So just to confirm, we're going to do the path and seventeen feet on each side. Anything under six inches is getting clear cut?
No, 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 six inches and yeah.
And then we can decide on if we say five feet or six feet of grass on each side would be appropriate and then we can let natural go from there. But we can decide at a later date.
Yeah, you can always change it.
Yeah, we can change that at a later date.
We should have like.
Yeah, I mean, no matter which way you pick, we could always change that in the future of, hey, we'd like less or more.
Okay, so.
And as, as pretty as these renderings are, when this path is first built, it's going to take a couple of years, no matter what's decided to to make things look.
And it does seem like there's kind of, so that, I was keeping track. It does look like there's more of a propensity towards a decorative. Because it was four to three. And even with your vote of bollards, because HRC did pick bollards, that's still four, four. So.
Me personally like bollards. The other person from HRC liked.
Sorry, everybody on the meeting. It was, it was a.
No, Mike likes the park lights. I liked the bollards. So we were split even at HRC.
So since that creates a tie, I say we go with the board decision.
I'm ready to make a motion. Make a motion that we approve the decorative slash park lights with the native. Keeping a native back to seventeen, seventeen feet for now, along with the.
Those are two different things. It's either native or keeping it seventeen feet clear.
Native.
Yeah. So you like it closer to the.
Yes. And along with that, we're going to inspect it. And as net, as needed, just clear it and keep it cleared as needed. So I mean, that's something that will, in the future, I'm sure, as you mentioned, will be looked at. And as needed, we can make, or you can make decisions on the clearing it out as.
Support.
So do you want discussion? Or sorry, so we have motion by trustee Burnett, support by trustee Fekki. Is there any discussion before we vote?
I have a question. So I like the part about the decorative park lights. I, I support that, but I do think we should have it cleared. But we could also separate those decisions and just talk about the lights now and address the, you know, where we draw the line as far as.
I think they kind of need this all as one.
You need some.
Like I said, for the design.
Can change it, but they need a, they need an idea of where to go.
Well, for the design, we're designing it to clear the full seventeen and a half feet on each side as part of this project. And then the native was going to be kind of see what's growing back and rather than, it's, that's going to be kind of more of a future maintenance thing. So as part of, as part of the construction, we are, yeah, we are clearing it for now and yeah.
So we clear it for now.
So in discussion, I guess I, I might like to see how everybody truly feels. I know we had a motion and a second, but I'm totally on the other side. I mean, I'm the bollard.
So right, it was a different, it was. No, 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 you vote, you vote. But there is this, we usually sometimes when it's a split issue, which it's four, three or three, four, we usually tend to give a discussion. So just wanted to see if there's any more before we vote.
So just for to clarify, the motion is decorative and clearing it.
Clearing seventeen.
No.
No, she had, she had said they were designing it to clear it, but the motion currently is to do decorative, but leave all the native there.
But it will be cleared to build the path.
But they are different. They, they're.
I mean, we could clear a little bit less in order to build the path. We don't necessarily have to go the full seventeen and a half feet on each side. But.
And again, we also can vote our own cut. You don't have to have a unanimous, but Mark had something to say.
I was just going to make a suggestion because it sounds like from the plan, it's going to be cleared anyway. So you really don't need to make a decision on native or decorative or.
Well, we do for our maintenance. So just so you know why I need a decision is because of the maintenance is involved.
But as I understand it, it's going to be two or three years before that really becomes an issue anyway. Or would one require planting grass seed or something like that?
No, one would require not mowing.
Yeah, if we.
Everything's going to be mowed.
Would continue mowing on our pattern. So they. They mow it. So they would be added to our mowing contract, which it will be mowed before two, it's, it's mowed. How many times a year do they do the? Multiple times during the year. Yeah, like fifteen, tens a year.
Right now, they're going to clear it and it's going to take some time for anything to happen.
But here's the issue, I don't know how, so let me try and phrase this differently. My DPW needs to know, once it's in and done and installed, are they adding it to the contract where it fully stays cleared until we make a decision otherwise? Or the motion that, the motion that Neil has made is it gets cleared for this and then it doesn't go on. And in a couple of years, if it's overgrown, then it would go on to the path. So what I'm saying is Neil's is different than what theirs is. I need to make sure we all understand what we're voting on. So yeah.
I withdraw my comment. I misunderstood.
Yeah. So I mean, we can, as a point of clarification, so we can clear the whole thing now and we can let things start growing back and revisit, do we want to make it more native? It's easier to remove things in the future than trying to add things in the future. So if we, if we clear the seventeen feet, we build the path, we get everything in, start to let things grow over a couple of year, over a year or two and then say, what do we want to do? I think that's what your motion is saying.
Yes. So to not add it on to the manicured.
So they wouldn't.
We would not.
At this time, it wouldn't be, but again, that could be revisited.
Basically native, non-manicured. So we have motion, we have a support. Everybody who's for it? Everybody against? No. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Uh, trustee Barnett?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
No.
Trustee Fekki?
Yes.
Trustee.
Kalinsky.
Treasurer Shostak?
No.
I'm yes and.
And I'm a no. Quarter three. So that does pass.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. Three, four before you were on the clearing side. All right. So next we have consider approval of the recommendation of strategic planning vendor. So we do have a slide show. I have to thank my assistant, Sue actually did all of the animations and made this pretty. So I would love to take credit, but Sue did this. So first again, we thank you, everybody for understanding and wanting the strategic plan. And thank you to the committee who will mention later who is on it. So first just remind everybody that the last strategic plan was created over fifteen years ago in two thousand nine. At that time was based on, you know, the recession and everything that they were dealing with. A lot has changed. We had the recession, then we had a growth, then we had a pandemic. We also had a budget crisis in twenty nineteen. So a lot has changed in the township. So going by the old two thousand nine is, is no longer a solid plan. That's how you get to those budget crises in twenty nineteen. In August twenty eighth, this board thankfully approved that we would use the ARPA funding for the strategic plan. And on January sixteenth, the RFP went out. We didn't just do the Mitten, which is the, our bid direct bid net is the Michigan's, where you list items from Michigan municipalities. We also reached out to lists of the top nationwide strategic planning. So we went not only for the RFP, but we did invitations as well. And that deadline was February fifteenth. So we actually had seven. I know some of us were hoping for at least one or two. We actually had seven full submissions. The strategic planning committee, I want to thank many of you who are here or were here too earlier. So we had myself, we had trustee Fekki, because we always have a trustee on all of these. So trustee Fekki was on here. Noah Maholsky, our DPW director who is here tonight, Jason Teis, who is here tonight, our finance director. And again, Sue Bolin, my assistant position has changed to more of like a chief of staff. So she does, having an ex-police detective helps when you're doing investigations. So she does a lot of the research that we need for this of other communities. So basically what we were looking for to narrow down seven, when you have all these proposals, our biggest issues were qualifications, experience. To many of us, community engagement was the biggest. Because even when you have a great consultant like Ref Tellus, if people don't show up, you don't fully know what the community wants. So really a big push was, bless you, was community engagement. Of course, cost. And there was a wide variety of costs that came in on these. And you can see the cost range anywhere from fifty-two thousand all the way up to three hundred and twenty-two thousand. So there were, there were some significant changes. These were the seven different companies that applied. Everywhere from, there were three, Michigan, Minnesota, Maine and Arizona and Georgia. And we narrowed it down. These were the four that were not selected. So first Crow, they're headquartered in Chicago, but they do have a satellite office in Grand Rapids. Again, they've been around a very long time. They are large. They have sixty-six hundred employees. What you heard earlier from Noah is one of the key factors is convenient surveys aren't technically accurate. They're usually just the loudest voice at the right place at the right time. So that's what we did with Ref Tellus. It was convenience. Whoever showed up, we asked their opinions. We got ten to twelve people out of forty-four thousand. So it's not a statistically relevant sample. They did not offer that option. They only do convenient surveys. So we can't actually prove that the data is correct. They also don't have any online portal or anything to continue engagement and to help with letting people know about when are events and what are we at. We also had government leadership solutions. Those, they were headquartered in Arizona. Little more recent, they have a little less experience. They're also much smaller. They're more of a boutique. They have six full-time employees. The three-member team, they were going to substantially limit their in-person visits and you, it's hard to engage the community unless you're in person. So that was a problem for us. Again, they also did not offer a statistically relevant survey. And just, you know, that's a significant cost. That's anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. So some of these were, were fifty to sixty thousand without an actual item that we needed. So although they seemed less expensive, it's because they weren't offering the full package. They also don't have an online portal for stakeholder engagement. And they have very limited experience in strategic planning. And the reason I say that is only one of their new hires has experience in strategic planning and she's only been there about two years. So the company itself does other, other things that they tend to focus on. Leader Gov is another one that was from Georgia. They're also a little smaller. They have ten full-time employees. They also could not offer a statistically relevant survey. They don't have the online portal. The reason I say limited experience in strategic planning, they actually are somebody who filled out for our leadership training that we offered here in the township for current leaders and upcoming leaders. And they really are a training company who said, here's your strategic plan and we'll throw in, so we'll give you all this free leadership training. So really it came across more of buyer leadership training and we'll throw in a strategic plan because they don't really have a lot of experience in it. And the last one was Wilcox Business, also more of a local one here in Detroit, also a little bit more recent. Twenty twenty was when it was founded. So it didn't have that five years of experience. The cost already is an outlier, kind of knocked it out because it's anywhere from two hundred to two hundred seventy thousand dollars more than all of the other bidders. Some of the things that stood out was there wasn't any references included. So we couldn't verify any of their other proposal. They didn't have an example of a strategic plan included as requested. They didn't have a community plan and also no survey and no online portal. So not only being an outlier on cost, it also didn't answer most of the items that we had in the RFP. So we did narrow it down to the three finalists that were going to be interviewed. So we did Zoom interviews with Barry Dunn, Future IQ and Public Policy Associates. And the first one, Barry Dunn, this one was headquartered again in Maine. They have eight locations also in the US and Puerto Rico. They're not as large as like the Crow with sixty-six hundred, but much larger than some of the boutique ones with anywhere from two to twenty employees. They've worked with a lot of governmental clients. They have a ten-member team that will be here. What was really important is obviously with Maine, the fact that they have people located in Detroit, they understand us. So we don't have to start the wheel of what is Detroit, Maine, what is this area and how to engage. So that helped that they had some support staff here that are consultants. The three that would be dedicated traveling to Michigan are the project manager, who's also the lead facilitator. She has thirty years of strategic planning and some government experience as well. She used to be on a board like us. So she gets both sides. And then they also have two additional facilitators that will come with her. They have an interactive portal, two of the companies did. That's important to engage those people that are too busy and don't want to come in person, but want to know what's going on, want to add, answer some convenient surveys because they're all going to offer those. So their portal also has translation options. So them as well as the next Future IQ, they both have Google Translate, where you just push the button and it turns it to, the whole website changes into the other language. So for anybody here in the township, we do have a very diverse population. They'd be able to see everything in their own language. And I think that was also a gap with some of the communication in the water rates, not being able to speak to people in their native tongue. And then the willingness, please go back. Sorry. The willingness to modify the portal. So they have a standard portal. And it's, it's not quite as engaging as some of the neat things that our cable department's been doing lately, where we could add more videos, more, more engagement that way because people tend to like pictures and videos. So they are willing to edit it and change it if necessary. The most important thing with Barry Dunn is they absolutely guaranteed a statistically relevant survey. It was a line item on there. And they guaranteed that if they didn't get it on their initial, they will continue to send out until they get that statistically relevant survey, as well as a convenient surveys. And their extensive community outreach included, again, them as well as one of the others. They don't just have events and you show up. They go where the people are. So to engage the youth as well as busy parents, they actually go to basketball games and just say, hey, what do you think about this? So they're actually going to go to the library. They're going to go on non-townships hall type things and go out to the community and ask questions and engage them that way. And, and a lot of the key stakeholders. So that was a, a large plus in their favor as well. Also, we have Future IQ. Also, they are headquartered in Minneapolis, Minnesota. They've been around for about twenty-one years. They have nine employees. They also dedicated three people traveling to Michigan. The lead facilitator, who's also the CEO, he has twenty-one years of strategic planning experience. They do have an interactive online portal that was flashier, which was nicer. That's where we got that idea of, hey, could we take their portal and, and move it elsewhere. So theirs had more of the videos and pictures. They also were willing to change the portal as needed. And they also have the Google Translate option. This was a sticking point was first, there was no statistically relevant survey option. Then they added it, which, which raised them up to the hundred thousand, but they still said they can't fully guarantee it. And if they can't reach a statistically relevant number, they'll give us a convenient survey. So now it's that twenty-five thousand dollar line item isn't a guarantee. So that was one of the sticking points and they do offer convenience. Public policy was one of our favorites in the beginning because it is Michigan-based, because it does know the area. Their big issue, and I think what was a huge shock was they prefer no community engagement. So when we asked, what's your community engagement? The response was, why do you need it? And I, I know I was baffled and I saw some faces on Zoom that also looked confused. They prefer to only deal with internal. And then we kind of figured it out why. They really are based in policy. They're not based in community strategic plans. They're based in, I have this one issue in my community, help me fix it. Or this department, like they did the treasury department for Oakland County. So they did just one department within a group and they wanted to fix that department. So they're not really geared towards engaging the community. And that was a huge knock on that as well as not a statistically relevant survey and not having an online portal. Because again, they don't really focus on any engagement with the community. So although cheaper, they didn't give us what we wanted. So again, the, the committee met and we talked about the interviews. It was quickly narrowed down to Barry Dunn and Future IQ. And they were both, honestly, we, we were having trouble picking between them. So that's when we engaged them and asked for them to set themselves apart. Could you do a statistically relevant data supply with your survey? What is your community engagement? Really lay it out for us. How many times will you be here in person? Not just how many times, how many days during that time will you be here in person? And how much experience does your lead facilitator have? So again, with the biggest issue being that statistically relevant survey and really wanting to know what the community needs, we ended up picking Barry Dunn. And I don't know if trustee Fekki wants to add anything to the, I really do appreciate you're a high, a great asset and so was Noah. Thank you.
Yes. No, it was great to serve on this committee and I think you covered the choices really well. Ultimately, I ended up choosing Barry Dunn because of the statistically relevant survey. You know, people think sometimes they confuse strategic plan and master.
Sometimes they confuse strategic plan and master plan, so the strategic plan is where do you wanna be and the master plan is how are you gonna get there? So at the strategic level, we need to engage the community because we wanna know where do, where does the community want Bloomfield Township to be? Um, so having the community engagement was really important and Barry Dunn basically said, we will keep engaging people until we. Get the number of people that we need to be statistically relevant, so I thought that that, um, you know, really was a very important factor. And as far as the um, the portal as well, they have a very engaging portal, the company's been around for a long time. It was obviously after meeting with them, they know how to help with strategic planning, they've done it several times for. Uh, many municipalities, even many in the state of Michigan, and I don't think that we can go wrong using them.
They, one of the funny things was, he said, uh, when I said, are you familiar with the Detroit area, we're very proud, we're very. We're very different than what you might be used to and he said, oh, yes, we are, we have two employees. That one's from Orion Township, one's from Detroit, and he said, all we ever hear is why Detroit's the best, why this, why that, so the fact they already are used to. What makes us different, um, and wanting that engagement, one thing too, although we're gonna need, when we do the master plan, which is, you know, about. Not our services, but the way land is used in our area and more of what's the vision of of developments. Will also want to strategic or uh, statistically relevant on that. Um, so that was, that was a big, I don't know if you wanna add anything now, if you wanna come on up or if you're. Ready for it.
I'll say that um, the public policy advisors, I told my wife it was like watching a fleet of planes crashing.
Oh, no.
During that interview, um, and really didn't meet a lot of the core goals that were within the RFP, right, and then um. Barry Dunn, I think it comes down to the public engagement, the history and the kinda depth that they were gonna kinda um. Survey and reach out to the community, so.
So with that.
Analogy.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was pretty bad, it was, it was pretty bad, so next, uh, as we would recommend, if you uh, would agree with Barry Dunn. That you award the strategic planning project to Barry Dunn in the amount not to exceed ninety seven thousand three hundred. To be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, um, accepting that the township supervisors authorized to approve an additional ten percent, should there be a documented. And significant deviation from the project's current scope of work or time proposal, also to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Something like that would be if the board decides, hey, we wanna add this and it's less than ten percent. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Oh, I think it's a great recommendation, thank you, everybody who participated in vetting them out, uh, Barry Dunn seems like a really. Great company and they'll provide what we're looking for and I wanna make a motion that we approve um, per the uh, the language that you just read.
Support.
Also my trustee Barnett, support by trustee Fekki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that goes pass, so we're going to let them know tomorrow, um, Sue will reach out to them. And set up um, for their initial visit, it will be here in person when we start to talk, they're gonna engage the board. So again, they have to follow the OMA, so we won't all be initially together, they'll probably do two at a time. Um, and then they did agree that they could be here for a study session, so we could all be together at some point, um, they'll also talk to all the department heads. For the internal and then they'll make that plan of when and where they're gonna reach out to the community and how we'll do that, so they'll come here first in person and kinda set that plan with us. The goal is to have everything done before, by the beginning of November, cuz again, we wanna keep this uh, to. The continuity under this board, so the next board has the plan to move forward with it, so they know it's a time crunch, it's about seven months, so. It's a, it's a quick turnaround, sometimes it can take up two years, so they are fully ready, that's why they're gonna do so many in-person visits. So I'll keep you posted once we get our dates going, alright? Thank you, everybody. So next we have considering the approval of an amended second resolution to reschedule the public hearing concerning phase two of Bloomfield Village. Road paving project, special assessment district number four twenty six from Monday, April eighth to Wednesday, April twenty fourth.
Presented by. And I have volunteered to do this, um, assessing was your last time, but when we prepared all of this together, uh, we had moved the meeting from. Uh, the eighth of April to the twenty second of April, we're not meeting on the twenty second of April. So this is to correct that, that's essentially a redo to uh, uh, schedule this um. Public hearing for the actual meeting date that week, which is Wednesday, April twenty fourth.
I do like that Jen said that for their next ones, they'll say the first or last meeting, so that if there is a date discrepancy, we won't have to come back and ask you again for another date.
I have a good idea.
Yeah, so do we have any questions if I look for a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that passes, and similar, considering approval of the amended second resolution to reschedule the public hearing concerning phase one. Of Bloomfield Village's road paving project, special assessment district number four twenty seven from Monday, April eighth to Wednesday, April twenty fourth.
Exactly the same thing as before, we, you know, put in the motion moving into the twenty second, but the date of the meeting that week is actually twenty fourth.
There's no questions, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky, support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that passes, and next we have payroll and vouchers for March twenty fifth, unless there's any questions or comments, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Fekki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and last, our motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Motion by clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes, we'll see you in two weeks.